Thank you for joining us at City Council briefing this morning on February 22nd. And we're going to kick off our briefing today with a joint discussion between council members and Plan Commission. And I'm going to have Spencer Garten to come up first. And he's going to do a short presentation, and then we'll go into discussion. Welcome, Spencer.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, Plan Commissioners and City Council members. I'm just going to set the stage for the discussion here by talking a little bit about some of the items that you'll see on the proposed 2024-2025 work plan. So the big one obviously is 2026. That's our state mandated comprehensive plan update. We are already starting a lot of the work or preparing for a lot of the work, doing some of the initial scoping and, as you'll see, also doing some initial studies. So that's really the biggest aspect of what we're looking at in the future. Just to give you an idea, the highlighted chapters or elements are the elements that we must update. Those are, there are required updates in those sections. The remainder, we may update, but there's no state mandate to do so. So that's not, we're not necessarily going to leave those as they are. But in terms of what we need to prioritize, we're really looking at those state mandated changes. And the highlighted elements are under some sort of mandate, either a new element, as in the case of the climate element, or there are elements that need to be updated because of some legislative change, or just because things have changed and we need to make sure that our comprehensive plan reflects the current conditions. I mentioned we're doing some projects currently that will feed into that update. So this slide hopefully gives you some ideas of what we're working on. We are, we have a set of annual amendments. So on an annual basis, we entertain amendments to the comprehensive plan. Under the GMA, those happen on an annual basis. So we don't take them piecemeal. They're supposed to be run through as a, sort of as a whole. Those amendments for 2024 are underway. We have advertised that we are planning to request for a suspension of the 2025 cycle. That would be next year's cycle. That was announced when we solicited applications for the 2024 cycle. But that, that is a decision that would ultimately be made later in this year. So other aspects, the population allocation and the housing unit allocation are underway, or I guess the population allocation is underway right now. The land capacity analysis, a lot of that stuff happens at the regional level. So the county convenes a conversation about that, and we are participating as staff. We also have three council members who are part of the Steering Committee of Elected Officials. And so they've been involved in those conversations as well. But that takes a significant amount of staff time for us to track that and also to be preparing our work to respond to where the county ends up with those. We did our building opportunity for housing project. That was completed last year and involved the comprehensive plan updates around middle housing. So that was a significant portion of our housing chapter that we feel like has taken a step forward. There will probably still be updates to that chapter as part of the 2026 update. But fortunately, we've done a lot of the groundwork there. Our Centers and Corridors Study is a study that's underway. That is, we see that as a really significant effort because it will be an important part of the conversation around the alternatives that we choose. So when we do our 2026 comprehensive plan update, we are expecting to do a full environmental impact statement along with that. And that process requires us to identify alternatives, various scenarios that we can evaluate to see what the expected outcomes might be depending on the choices that we make. And as we look at our Centers and Corridors Study, we're thinking about how that can inform the various scenarios that we present and ultimately evaluate as part of that process. Lastly, and this is more in the integrated capital management world, but the greenhouse gas inventory, they have completed a lot of work related to the inventory. That will feed into the climate planning work that we have to do as part of the comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to highlight that a lot of that work has already been completed. And I have a slide about that here. So the work that they've done really revolved around establishing or reestablishing a baseline, what are our current emissions based on the assumptions that we make about how things are operating currently, both as a city entity and also as a city, the entire, you know, population of the city. And then we created a future forecast. There is going to be more info about this presented at March 7th study session. So I'm giving you a pretty high level view of what's happened. But I wanted to be clear that there has been a lot of work that has already been done on greenhouse gases. And we will continue to do work, and that's going to, again, feed into our 2026 update because we do need to include a consideration of climate impacts and climate resiliency as part of that. So some major aspects of our 2026 update, I mentioned the land capacity analysis. This, the housing unit allocation is a new one. That came out of the state legislature a couple of years ago. They introduced requirements that not only do we account for the population that we expect to have come here in the next 20 years, but that we account for the, the level of, the income levels and the relationship to, to the housing that can be produced to meet those housing needs. So we did some of that groundwork in our Housing Action Plan. But we will, there's some state mandated elements around that, that we will be incorporating into our comprehensive plan. And that's a significant effort that we will undertake. I've talked about climate planning a little bit. Our expectation at this point is that we would fold climate planning into all of the chapters, all relevant parts of the comprehensive plan, rather than doing climate as a separate chapter. It felt like integrating it as a whole made a lot more sense. But we, we do have options as far as how we proceed, based on the guidance that we've, we've received from Commerce. And there will be some more discussion about that. We do have a representative from Commerce as the next item on this meeting, where he will talk some about the, the climate planning element and just overall comprehensive planning. Levels of service, I know is, has, there's been a lot of discussion about that. The 2026 periodic update would be a time for us to consider the levels of service that are adopted in our comprehensive plan. So we will be looking at that. And then another major new part of comprehensive planning is there are additional requirements around tribal engagement. And so we will, we will be incorporating that into our comprehensive plan as well. I talked a little bit about integrated capital management. They don't directly interact with the Plan Commission as much as the Planning Department does. But I just wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the work that they're doing that will also interact with the comprehensive plan. So they're working on a study for the Integrated Water Plan. The Strategy Report for the ETAC, which is related to water and sewer and stormwater, is currently underway. They would be heavily involved in the review and drafting of levels of service as part of the 2026 update, as well as the updates to the Capital Facilities Plan that would occur under the 2026 update. And then, of course, any technical appendices related to the engineering part. I'm trying to move quickly because I want to give you time for discussion. So the other thing, the big thing that's highlighted on the list of, in the work program are state mandated requirements. So a quick rundown of 2023 legislative items, some of which we have completed, some of which we plan to take on this year or at some point in the future. They have varying timelines as far as when they must be implemented by cities. So when the legislature adopts a bill, they don't necessarily expect us to have code in place the next day. So we do have sort of a grace period during which we can make those changes. But our, our goal is to get these done as quickly as we can. So 1110, that was mostly covered by BOH. There may be some additional changes that we need to make. HB 1337 mandates certain ADU aspects to our code. We did a recent ADU update, and that, I think, fixed some of those things. But there are probably some additional updates needed, and we're looking at later this year to get those underway. The housing allocation I mentioned as part of the update for 2026, there are some changes to design review that will be required under the, under House Bill 1293. So we will be looking at those this year. Climate planning I've talked about. And then Senate Bill 5290 mandates specific timelines and permitting requirements. And so the, the state committee that's reviewing those and making recommendations for implementation is going to be wrapping up its report, I believe, in March. Tammy Palmquist from our Development Services Center has been on that state committee. So we've been pretty well plugged into that. But that will require some updates to our code as well. And then just a few notable bills from, from the current legislative session. These may or may not be adopted. But if they are adopted, they could then add more to our workload. The first is SRO and co-living changes. The TOD bill is a big one. I think there's been a lot of discussion about that. Residential parking updates. There is some discussion about building code changes. And while the Planning Department wouldn't directly be involved, the Plan, the Plan Commission does oversee Title 17 and provide recommendations on changes. And the building code is under Title 17. So that could involve the work of Plan Commission. And then the Neighborhood Cafes bill, House Bill 2252, is another one that might require us to do some work. So just trying to give everybody a sense for the mandated elements that we don't really have a lot of leeway over, other than maybe sliding the timeline a little bit. And with that, I guess I'll leave it up for discussion. Council President?
Thank you, Spencer. And I'm remiss. I'd like to acknowledge the Plan Commission members. Thank you for your time this morning to come down here and share where you're at and take questions from us as how we better serve the city. So I'll be taking questions. Councilmember McCattcart?
Yeah, first Spencer, I don't know if you can answer. I'm just wondering, kind of what, what is the thought process in terms of, of spreading the climate throughout the comp plan? Because there are some areas where that would naturally be in conflict, such as affordable housing.
I think the goal of sprinkled it, of kind of spreading it throughout the comprehensive plan is that we can directly address some of those perceived conflicts. So if we have a climate element that's saying, or a chapter that's saying one thing, and then a, a housing chapter that's saying another thing, it seems like that will be easier to resolve if we are really considering climate throughout and in the context of questions about affordable housing or jobs and economic development, those kinds of things.
And so do you have some thoughts that will be shared at that March 7th study session as to how that's going to come together? And then on top of that, just wondering, with all of the work that's been done with the SAS and the Sustainable Action Plan and all of the stuff that we've adopted, are we kind of 80, 90% there in terms of where we need to be for that piece to come together? Or do you see a lot more work that has to be done?
I think there's a lot more work. We have to do a lot of evaluation of resiliency, for example, which has not been really a major part of what has happened so far. And then I think resolving some of the questions like you raised about how we, how we identify or deal with some of those potential conflicts between our climate goals and our housing goals.
Yeah.
I think that's going to take some time. So I don't, I guess I wouldn't put a percentage at it. Maybe it's under 50% for sure, and maybe more like 20 or 30% done. The Sustainable Action Plan is a good example of work that has been done that I think will inform the process. But it's, we're not proposing to take the Sustainable Action Plan and just adopt it without any further process.
Okay. And then could you, could you just share more information on those legislative bills? I'm not on the ledge team, so I don't get those updates. But if you could send just the summaries of what's, what those are going to do?
Yes, yeah, I could provide that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember McCattcart. So I've got a question, obviously. So asking the Commissioners, what should be the highest priority work item on your list? The list was extensive. From your perspective as volunteers and the scope of work, where do you think the energy should be placed? Don't you guys all answer at once?
Obviously, the comprehensive plan update is, affects the city in a large way and does take several years. So I think that is probably the biggest priority. And so many things are wrapped up in it, you know, the Centers and Corridors research and some of the other housing updates. So I see that as the highest priority, but also the design standards conversation is always a, an interesting one. And because it is related to the House bill, I think that it will be helpful to take time because it can affect how development happens over the next, you know, decade or so.
Thank you. And thank you, Orion, for saying, talking about the design standards. I think that is a really important one that wants to be a very robust public process, not necessarily an internal assumed process. We have a lot of things to clean up in the city with a lot of overlays or Hamilton and so forth that need to be brought together. And that's going to be a complicated process to do that and find harmony with, with the other codes. If, if I can use this opportunity real quickly on, related to a couple of the bills. First of all, I'm on borrowed time. So I'm on a 90-day loophole here. So I get to say something and drop the mic and then thank everyone for the opportunity in, on the eight years of the Plan Commission. But with a couple of things that are, now that the city has done a great job, and thank you for your support on enacting a lot of reform on the zoning and, and land use, with the, some of these bills that are related to the building codes, and I want to raise this and, and a couple of the House bills, 2052 with the neighborhood retail, 2071 relates to bringing a lot of the middle housing into the residential and the building code. And I'm in a, in a position where I'm the Vice Chair of the Building Code Council. That's why I'm moving on and, and we're focused on enacting some of that. And then another bill from last year was the six-story, single-stair typology that has to be, is mandated now to be enacted this year. And there's an opportunity for the city to really lead because, and the state's asking for this, as we bring that into, into rulemaking, right now, those provisions were based off of something that's been in, in Seattle building code since the 70s. And they're asking the rest of the state, especially the second largest city, to help lead on this. So it's not just a Seattle, Seattle's very sensitive to that this cannot be a Seattle-led initiative. And the city of Spokane, because we've already enacted some of these zoning and land use, has the opportunity, as, as Director Gardner indicated, the Plan Commission, seen over Title 17, we just haven't engaged the Plan Commission in that way in the public process on the building codes. And, and because we're in a position where two Spokaneites might be leading the fire in the building technical advisory groups on this, we would really like to pilot that with, with, with the city.
Yeah, first off, I want to thank Planning Commission for the snacks. Thank you very much. But are, when we're looking at the, you know, the bills that are coming through the legislature, excuse me, are any of them going to like significantly delay housing production in the area?
I'm trying to remember. I don't, I don't think so. I can't remember.
And I'll speak to that specifically to 2071. That's, that's meant to align the building code with the middle housing mandates that were pushed through in both 1110, you know, last year, and then in 1220, you know, two, two years ago. I think there's, I can say that there's concern that it's being pushed into the residential code. A lot of it actually will happen in the building fire code anyway. But that's something where the city doesn't need to wait for three years to bring this forward. We, we do have the ability as a city to, to line that. So that should, should speed alignment with, with a lot of the residential.
And do we foresee any other issues coming up like we did with 1110, where we had some groups telling us, hey, it's going to completely shut down, you know, the housing market in three weeks unless you guys do this? Any, any significant, again, issues like that with the bills coming down that we can foresee? If we were to adopt them early?
Are you asking for potholes?
I just want to make sure because I, I like the idea of what you're, of what you're saying, adopting them early to, to get these things going. And I think that, you know, us as a council have been, you know, really great on this particular issue, trying to get housing built quickly. But again, I just don't want us to run into a situation where we find ourselves in a, you know, a big oopsie.
Sorry if I'm, I'm dominating, but it, it is my kind of subject matter area. It, the idea here is to actually find the in-between. And that is the gap right now, that there's the residential code and this addition, you know, these issues with the appraisers and the mortgages and so forth, like, as those get resolved, and they will, like that, those are, you know, just, everyone needs to catch up on that. Unfortunately, it's presented as a binary, that the commercial building and the building code is, is an extreme for skyscrapers. That's not the case. It actually will provide a pathway for more affordable housing when we go performance-based. I'm actually concerned that we're going too prescriptive. But developing that third in-between that's most appropriate for these housing typologies is really the goal. So I think it's an opportunity, not a, not a, you know, a threat.
Well, I'm going to ask, given the significant amount of work related to state mandated items, which we've been talking about, including the new potential legislative mandates, are there items currently listed on the work plan that should be removed or deprioritized? Is there something that's not great?
Well, I'd say making sure, expecting a suspension of the 2025 comp plan updates, I would ask that council do suspend the 2025 comp plan updates, just so that we, it allows us to focus on the actual main comprehensive plan and the other work that we have to do.
Great. Councilmember McCattcart?
Well, yeah, I would just say there's a few things on there that I really hope that we don't set aside. I mean, Councilmember Bingle put forward the workplace or the, the home-based work updates. We've got Neighborhood Retail, which is also a potential legislative bill that really needs, I mean, frankly, if we're talking climate, that would be number of priority number one, in my opinion. And so there's a few things like that that we should not set aside. And so I would love to have a conversation around what do we need to do to increase our capacity to get this work done, rather than starting to cut and slice and dice.
And similarly, the Neighborhood Retail bill, I, given what happened this week in the Senate, I'm not actually positive or hopeful that it's going to pass in the way that the House passed it. And so I would want us to, I know we have so much on here, but it's something that I was hoping we would be able to get on here this year or next year, that if it doesn't pass at the state level, that, that we look into it as well. Because again, it's going to affect how our neighborhoods are built. But at the same time, since we're working on Centers and Corridors, and I think that that is part of that conversation across the whole city as well.
Well, it, it is on there. We, we put it on there last year. I know it, there, you know, there hasn't been time to take it up yet. But, but I would also say that it's sort of antithesis, it's an antithesis to Centers and Corridors, because the whole idea is neighborhood-based.
Right.
And that would be sort of the opposite of Centers and Corridors, so.
I do, I think Centers and Corridors and Neighborhood Retail can really align together, though. They can be, I, I love the idea of Neighborhood Retail. It works well in my neighborhood, and I really want to see it expanded. I think we've made it too challenging to do today. I'm effectively making it impossible. And so regardless of what happens at the state, I think it needs to continue. And so I'd like us to move forward.
I think that'd be, one of the last pieces, too, I didn't see it on there, but we had added some language around tiny lot development last year. And so I didn't see it on the list, but I know we added it. And so I think, again, if we're talking about housing production, more housing, more opportunities, that's another one that should be prioritized rather than, you know, sliced and diced.
Thank you, yes. On a couple of those lots splitting bill was, you know, was, is dead at this point in legislature. And that's one that should be strongly considered at the state level, or at the city level, in my opinion. But the other one, the Neighborhood Retail, and thank you Commissioner Patterson, you know, House Bill 2252. And, you know, we appreciate and love every one of the council members here and their, and participation in, in outside organizations. But AWC slashed this one. And this is one where I think the city could also really lead and, and try to inform, you know, statewide what, what can be done on Neighborhood Retail.
Councilmember, any other questions? I'm going to push back on that one just a little bit. I met with AWC yesterday. They said they're not the boogeyman. It was misinterpreted, their support or a lack of support. As you know, we always push local control. Councilmember Bingle, and I'll go to Councilmember Klitsky because she's got something around transportation. I know.
Oh, I've been asked.
You have a question?
No.
No, okay. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would, as Councilmember Cathcart brought up, I really appreciate the idea and really the emphasis on Neighborhood Retail, especially as we know, as things continue to get more expensive, as inflation continues to go, more and more people, you know, are looking for something to do in the home, you know, without necessarily having to step out and get office space or retail space or something like that. And most of these businesses that we're talking about, I mean, they're doing less than $25,000 a year in total sales. Like, it's not a, a huge impact on, on the neighborhood itself, but it's a huge impact on that family to be able to bring in those dollars. And so I would encourage us to, again, to just continue to push that because, you know, it's a, it's a person grooming dogs, you know, you know, a few times a week. It's a person who's just baking some cookies, trying to, trying to, you know, make a little bit of extra money there. On the, on the comp plan suspend, or the, the 2025 suspension there, I just want to know, I guess, sort of the practical effects of what, are there any projects that we can foresee coming forward that would not be able to move forward if that's what we choose to do?
Thanks, Spencer.
That might be a better question for me.
Okay.
We, we tried to be out, as we were advertising for this year's comp plan amendments, letting people know that that was a possibility, that we would suspend the 2025 cycle. So hopefully there were, anybody who was thinking within the next couple of years to do an amendment, we're getting them this year. I am not aware of anything that was potentially in the pipeline that would be impacted by it. But we're usually not aware of things until they actually submitted applications. So I can't say definitively there's nothing that would be impacted. Hopefully, we got the word out well enough that it's not as much of a concern.
If there was an item of major city interest, could it, could a potential amendment go through, through the emergency process?
That's a good question. So suspending the private applications does not prevent us from doing our own annual amendments. And in fact, because we'll be working on the 2026 comp plan already at that point, we may have some changes that are needed as part of, kind of part of the 2026 update, but that we can run in 2025, for example. So there is just the regular route. But then, of course, anything that is considered an emergency can be done outside of the cycle. Ideally, we're doing it as a, as a whole. That's, that's kind of the goal. But there are possibilities there.
Councilmember Klitsky?
So now I have two things. I'm sorry. So in regard to suspending comp plan updates of the year of the comp plan update, like the annual amendments, that's pretty standard practice across jurisdictions. The reason we have comp plan updates is, like the annual amendments, is to make changes after your major update. So when you're doing it the year of your major update, you should be able to incorporate whatever concerns are coming up in that major update. Comp plan amendments are big, major changes to our zoning. They're not your work-a-day project. So it shouldn't interfere with any projects coming up. But what I was going to say, back on our topic previous to this question, when it comes to Centers and Corridors versus Neighborhood Retail, I think we really need to look at both. I think Neighborhood Retail is kind of its own thing. I think when you have it in your neighborhood, you love it. And when you don't have it, you don't get it until you get it. But with Centers and Corridors, we're kind of deciding where we're doing proactive investments to encourage more intense development. So they're kind of different animals, and I don't think they really compete with each other. I think they're both important. So yes, apparently.
Just as a, as a side on that, I think that they, I agree that they are, are different animal. But I think we need to have the discussion at the same time for the public. Because especially when Centers and Corridors was introduced 30 years ago, it, it was really defined as how businesses would be incorporated within the city. And so in talking about Neighborhood Retail, we have to kind of let people know how they will work together so that they really understand how it will impact their neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's true. That's a big attitude change between, we were only going to have businesses and Centers and Corridors, and we have completely changed our minds about that, I think, in the last 30 years, so.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to get back to the idea that if something were to come up, you know, that we don't foresee because, you know, as, as much, we won awards for our park program, going out and doing, you know, outreach. And then we still try to do projects, and we hear, we never heard about this, you know? And so it's not to say that we haven't done a good job of the outreach, I believe that you have. But I just think that we're going to run into some, some people who maybe didn't hear or didn't realize or whatever. And so I just want us to be... And so I just want us to be somewhat open to that as we go forward, because you guys might not know this, I hate the emergency process, I think we abuse the emergency process, and so to me, emergency means one thing, and I don't think we use it that way. And so even if there is a way for us to do it, I don't know that I want us to go through that, I just, I have concerns that we would suspend it.
Well, perhaps what we can do before you do the suspension, if you're considering it, then make it very clear that that's a consideration, you know. So we do have a representative from Spokane Home Builders here, so hopefully you can get that information out to the community, and so that they are aware of the possibility of suspension in advance. And if they have a concern with that, they can reach out to council.
Well, this is the open-ended question for any of you all to answer. So outside of housing, what are the most significant planning-related problems the city faces outside of housing? It's not a gotcha question, it really is.
Go ahead, I'm going to Tim.
Well, something that has, sometimes it feels like we're a rubber stamp on, and sometimes it feels like we're adding a lot of value, is the whole GFC fees and the fees that are associated with new development. And so I think the, kind of how much capacity do we actually have for water and sewer, and where's the fire station going to go out in the Thorpe area, some of those issues, it feels like sometimes we're a rubber stamp, it's like, here's the street project list, and you go, "That's nice, but I'm not going to have any impact on that." And then other times, it's like, "Well, GFC fees are at a crisis, we want you to review this for the council." And it's like, we could have spent way more time to try and understand that, and what's our rationale. So I think that question of capacity analysis, and particularly related to the neighborhoods where we don't have all the roads and infrastructure in, and we're talking about moratorium, I think that's a really big issue.
What a great one. Come back to your next question.
Well, I do think that neighborhood retail is really important, and also the, the centers and corridors, because we need to do a really good job of fostering local businesses, and particularly in centers and corridors where we can blend mixed use between business and housing. And so the closer we can get people into proximity to the workplace, the better it's going to be. So I really want to, you know, the centers and quarters, as Ryan had indicated, is, you know, decades old at this point, and there's been a lot of thoughts and changes in that, the thinking process there, and I think we can do a good job on improving it, which I'm glad that's already in process, so.
So similarly, I, centers and corridors, but mixed retail, mixed use, I think, is our, after housing, that's our next thing. The only other thing that I think is a priority for the city, but is not on here yet, because we are focusing on housing and then on mixed-use development, is looking at, and this is similar to what Tim was saying, what is our capacity and our level of service for transportation across the whole city? Like, how are we making it so that people can get around? And we're hitting a point where it's not like we can or should make our roads wider, because we've maxed out. So a comprehensive look at how people are traveling and how they are able to access the city.
Mary? Well, I was going to say transportation, but I think you just covered that one. And the other issue is the fact that as we move forward, well, there's a couple issues. As we move forward, ahead of some other, some parts ahead of the others, I always worry about internal consistency, so that when we pass one thing and then we see it in another section of it, we haven't, haven't, we aren't fighting against each other from one section of the plan to the other, and when you do it somewhat piecemeal, that can occur unless you're thinking holistically and have a philosophy of the entire document. The other thing is, we've talked a lot about public, and I would really like to see a plan that encourages and gives opportunity, ample opportunity for the public to weigh in, not after something's passed, but before. And sometimes that gets uncomfortable, but I would, I personally would rather see those things come out in advance and talk about it before they look like they were done to someone. So I would, I'd like to see a good public participation process.
Cliff?
Yeah, what I see is the environmental thing could become a big problem, because it affects things like level of service for water, sewer, it might affect transportation. So how that folds back into the whole comprehensive plan, housing, land use, we could have major work in some of the other chapters, depending on where we go with the new chapter on that. So, and we need public input at the same time, so that could be a major hurdle to get everything done by 2026.
And I will say, community engagement is the bane of our existence. None of us have quite got it down right to really hear the voices that are missing, that we're all trying to capture, especially in neighborhoods, Mary, that's critical, because they're foundational already to our city and how we grow. Any other comments or questions for councilmembers above?
Yeah, I was just thinking, when we're talking about transportation and the parking minimum requirements, I know we addressed residential parking minimum requirements last year, I think it'd be helpful to consider the commercial, and that addresses the, also the business neighborhood and all that stuff, too. So wanted to encourage the commercial. Oh, and I was going to say, too, if you see legislation that is worrisome to you, feel free to forward it to us and staff, and we can also, we have city lobbyists, if you're like this is going to have a negative impact, let us know, because we can address it that way, too.
Great, thank you. And I will say, there is a lot of legislation that's specific to planning, that doesn't really get to council members, doesn't, it's important, but it doesn't get on our legislative agenda that we're actually lobbying, advocating for it. So Councilmember Kat Cart, some of those bills I'm just aware of because of other spaces, but it hasn't come to council, or hasn't really been brought to us as to, "Hey, council, we want you to weigh in on this," and then go forward from that.
Comment? I'll throw one more in. The city's already leading in this area, but in our wildland urban interface, this is an area where a, a city like ours has the ability to do a lot of local mapping and specific planning around that, and that overlaps with actual planning, but in this case, it's going to get, in Olympia, it's getting thrown into chaos right now, and there's litigation and so forth. And so this is one where the city can, I mean, we're most affected on the east side, so we need to continue to prioritize the model that works for us.
Councilmember Kat Cart is our last question?
Well, not a question, just a comment on the ledge stuff. I just think, and I'm, again, not on the ledge team, so I'm not a part of those discussions, but these, the ones that are on the list here, were ones that could directly affect us, and I would just think that that would rise to a level of a conversation amongst the ledge committee, so.
Yes, it would if it was brought to us. That was comment, Councilmember Klitsky, then we got to move on.
I'm sorry, I'm going to dominate with my need for our town hall tonight. We're having a land use town hall tonight about all things land use. Is there any question or thing you would like us to ask at that town hall?
If you're stumped, email Councilmember Klitsky.
Yes, good, good.
What's the best way for them to stay engaged?
Okay, that, that's on my list, yeah.
Because when I've reached out, you know, when I was community assembly and now this, biggest challenge is engagement, and so many people come up and do public comment at city council, by that point, most of it's baked. How do they get involved early in the process?
Okay.
And I plan to be there.
Again, thank you Plan Commission for joining us today, answering our questions, connecting more. You're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of this, or I know time is valuable, you can be excused if you like, but at that, thank you. Let's give them a clap. Oh, you can stay, yeah. Stay up here, absolutely. Moving on, we're not going to hear from Dave Anderson, from Department of Commerce, which I'm sure will kind of all dovetail to a lot of this, so welcome, Dave.
This is it, right? Where do I point it? There?
I think you pointed it thin and down.
There we go, got it.
Got it.
All right, thank you for having me. I'm so happy to be here. Again, my name's Dave Anderson, I am the Managing Director of the Growth Management Program at the State Department of Commerce, and I'm so happy to be here. Department of Commerce, we work with the city very closely on a whole variety of issues, from community services to planning, to infrastructure, to finance, a whole variety of things. And one of the things about the way Commerce works is, it's kind of interesting, we have a multi-billion dollar infrastructure investment portfolio, we do not own so much as a backhoe, which is my way of saying, everything we do in Commerce, we do in partnership, and we do through our development, our implementation partners. And cities, including the city of Spokane, is one of our most important implementation partners in everything we do. When you succeed, we succeed. So on behalf of the whole department, I want to thank you for your partnership, and I want to thank you again for having me here. Before we start talking about the periodic update, we're going to start with some of the preliminary slides that talk about sort of planning as, as a whole, as a foundation. Some of you have been through our short course, some of you have been around for a while, some of you have even spoken at our short course. This is going to sort of, we're going to run you through some of that very quickly, and then we're going to talk about how that relates to the periodic update requirements. So that's kind of what, what this part of today is going to look like. And we're going to start with this question, is why would you want to have a comprehensive plan? And I'm going to propose some of the most important reasons why you even have a plan or a planning program in the first place. First one is, we're making long-term decisions. We're making decisions where lots of different individuals and groups have to work together to get something done. And I think one of the most important ones, we're trying to accomplish things that are going to require persistent effort over a long period of time. If you think about the community here, and you think about what are places in this community that people love, some of those, all of those places started as somebody's plan. There was a plan for Riverfront Park, there was a plan for its redevelopment, there was a plan for a lot of the neighborhoods that goes way back to Frederick Law Olmsted and the parking, and the park program. All of these places that we love started as a plan. You don't see the plan anymore, but you see the effects of that plan, okay? We're planting seeds with these plans that are going to bear fruit decades later. We're also going to be making obligations that we're going to be paying on for decades in terms of how we set up our infrastructure. And lastly, I think, is back to some of the fundamental constitutional principles behind land use, and the public expects fairness and transparency, and we have an obligation to show a rational basis for the decisions we're making, especially in terms of the regulations we're adopting. And the planning process is essential to meeting those fundamental constitutional obligations as well. So this is some of the reasons why we have a planning program to begin with. And now we're going to talk about that, those, that last piece, the fairness and transparency part, okay? We've got some obligations, these are not under state law, not only under state law, but also under the federal constitution, okay? Things like takings, things like due process, okay? Both substantive due process and procedural due process. So is there a understandable process for how the city makes decisions? Can somebody look at your policies, can somebody watch what you're doing and say, "Yeah, I understand how they made that decision, who I need to talk to, what do I need to file in terms of an application, how are they going to go about, who's making the decision?" That needs to be transparent. And then, in any given decision that you're making, did you actually follow the process? That's really the procedural due process. The next part is substantive due process, which is a lot squishier, but really fundamental to planning as a whole. Is the rule that you're adopting clear enough that somebody knows what they need to do to actually follow the rule, okay? When we're talking about design standards and some of the changes that came out of statute, a lot of that was based on trying to get a lot more clarity about design standard, making them a lot less squishy, so that an applicant has a more advanced notice of what they actually have to do the first time they file the application. And then, is there a rational connection between any of the conditions you're adopting, or any of the requirements you're adopting, and a valid public purpose, and any impact that's actually associated with the project? That's, that's a constitutional obligation we have, rough proportionality, rational basis. And the plans that you adopt, and the analysis that you do in this plans, is really fundamental to this obligation, to connecting what you're requiring with your regulations, and a legitimate public purpose, and a deliberative process that the jurisdiction has gone through to determine that, yes, that regulation is necessary. These are really fundamental to the planning process, and when you watch the analysis, and when you watch how the numbers fall as they move through, keep in mind that a lot of that stuff, that seems like a ton of process, is really fundamental to meeting some of these really basic constitutional obligations. And then lastly, is the mitigation, this is sort of a restatement of the above, is the mitigation you're requiring proportional to the impact you're associating, or are you asking an individual applicant to take on a burden that's really more properly a burden of the community as a whole? These are some of the legal and constitutional obligations that your planning process fulfills. So then the question is, well, what makes a, how do you tell a good plan from a bad plan, okay? And I would say, in some ways, you can tell a good plan by looking at its cover. Every good plan has this on, every good plan, or I could say, every bad plan has this on its cover, and that's dust, okay? A bad plan is one that you're not using. And here's what makes a good plan. I would say there's really three qualities to a good plan. It is realistic, it is compelling, and it is specific, okay? It is compelling in that you've got the vision, those goals and policies, the vision statements, that you've had the conversation with your community, and your plan shows a future that's worth working toward, okay? You show something that's compelling enough. At the same time, it's also specific enough that you've got a real sense of what you need to do to get there. And lastly, it is a realistic plan. A lot of the work we do on things like inventories and analyses and forecasts is really about determining whether your strategy for achieving your vision is a realistic one, given the facts that you have on the ground in front of you, and given what you have to work with. And again, back to this, I would say, you can define quality planning in just two words, disciplined imagination, okay? A compelling enough imagination, but a clear sense of where you are now and how you're going to get there. That's the hallmark of a quality plan. So in a comprehensive plan, Spencer showed you this earlier, what your plan looks like, you're going to see these different required elements, and some extra ones, jurisdictions often, often adopt others. And then, well, what's in an actual element? There's the future land use map, and then if you look to each of the elements, this is what you're going to see. You're going to see goals and policies, okay? That's the compelling part, the compelling vision. You're going to see things like inventories and analyses, what's going on right now, okay? What do we have to work with? What do we think is going to happen in the future? What are those things that aren't in our control that we need to, we need to understand, because they're going to constrain our choices? And then lastly, strategies and commitments, what are we actually going to do to get there? Okay? You're going to find in each of these different elements, if you look through the RCW requirements, they're going to have, there's a little bit of variability, but they're going to have this basic structure. What do we want to achieve? What do we got to work with right now? What are we going to do about it? Okay? That's the basic structure that you're going to find in the individual elements of the comprehensive plan. I'm going the wrong way, sorry. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Washington's planning framework, and, you know, we're from the Growth Management Program, and Growth Management is sort of the word, the Growth Management Act is, is the planning law in Washington. But every state in the Union has some planning framework or another, whether it's, whether it's, whether it's designed, or whether they've sort of stumbled into it, or kind of a combination of the two, like most states are. But our planning framework is not just the GMA, there's the GMA, there's a whole bunch of other laws that govern planning, how you do impact fees, how you do subdivisions, all of these things, these are all the other laws that govern planning. That occurs within the context of how you run a city overall, Title 35, and, you know, things like your tax structure, things like governance, who's making what decisions. All of these other things are governed, annexation laws, okay? They're also governed by other state laws, and then there's the fundamental constitution that's behind those, okay? Article nine of the Constitution establishes cities and counties as subdivisions of the state constitution. So all of these together sort of equal the context that we're working in, in terms of a statutory and a legal, and a legal context. One of the things that's happened over the last 20 years since the GMA was passed is, I think the GMA is, is no longer one section of the RCW, it's now kind of the word we use when we talk about the whole thing. So when people talk about the GMA, and what are you going to do in the GMA, it's really not just 3678, it's the, it's the whole thing, right? And there's one particular part that I think every planning framework in the US has to address, and it's this, this fundamental tension between a And it's this, this fundamental tension between a couple of public expectations, and the public holds both of these expectations. And as you can imagine, these expectations exist in tension. I'm sure you all have heard this before. Just tell me what I need to do to get my permit, all right? I just need to, I just need to pull a permit, tell me what I have to do, and I'll do it. All right? That's transparency and predictability. And there's required, there's, there's goals in the RCW, there's a lot of requirements in what's called the Local Project Review Act, aiming at this issue of making sure that there's fairness and transparency and predictability, that I, you're going to tell me what I need to do, and if I do it, I get my permit. On the other side, this is probably something you've heard before, too. Well, that project's going to affect my neighborhood. It's going to affect my property values. I, I have a legitimate interest in that project, and I, I should have a say in how that works. Okay? And the public kind of holds both of these values. And our planning framework has to try to reconcile the inherent tension that exists between these two, frankly, legitimate expectations, both of them. And Washington law has addressed this in a very particular way. There are some states that kind of really heavily favor one path, and some states that really heavily favor the other. Washington has taken this really weird middle ground. Okay? In that, when you're talking about legislative decisions, that are decisions that are in front of the council, the policy decisions about what's in the comprehensive plan, what is in the development of regulations? Okay? Those decisions, Washington law procedurally heavily favors the deliberative end of this process, right? Early and continuous public participation, lots of deliberation. The reason why there's a docketing process, it's about creating more deliberation in this, heavily favors that. But, once those regulations are adopted, once your comprehensive plan is adopted, Washington law shifts radically and heavily favors certainty and predictability. When you're talking about a permit that's on the counter, Washington law heavily favors the other side. There's a Local Project Review Act with very clear timelines. Okay? Washington's law governing vesting, what rules actually apply to a project are different than the rest of the country, in that we require that you consider a project under the law that was in place on the date the application hit the counter. That's different than the way most states operate. But it's part of this heavy favoring of certainty and predictability once the rules are getting made. So there's a, that's how Washington has squared it. I've, I've worked here for quite a while, and I happen to think it's a good way to do it, but it's kind of weird. If you look at how the rest of the, and it may, what it means is that when you're working on these decisions about the comprehensive plan and on the development of regulations, that really matters. It's really hard under Washington law for you to re, for you to sort of revisit and second guess those decisions at the permit level. Okay? You can't start asking about whether this is the right place for something, once you've adopted the zoning that says that's a permitted use in that zone. That's, you're, they're good to go. So that's, so, so plan carefully, because you're going to mean it. And now we're in, now I want to transition, and I want to talk about this review and revision process. This is, this is another part of Washington law, is that there's this periodic update process that happens every 10 years. Okay? You're reviewing your comprehensive plan and your development regulations. There's a statutory schedule here, you can see it here. And what you're reviewing it against is, rather than the docketing process where you're only looking at those proposals that you're changing, and there's no way to compel a city to make a change they're not inclined to make. Okay? You're reviewing the whole plan, and you're reviewing it against two things. One, have there, are there changes in statutes since you last adopted your comprehensive plan that you haven't implemented yet? This is the time when you implement new statutory requirements. It's also the time where you're assured that the plan that you adopted and was compliant at the time you adopted it is not falling out of compliance over time through inaction. So you've got an inventory, you've got a capital facilities inventory, you've got to make sure the projects you built go on, the projects that you still need to build, or the new projects you need go on, that the projects you already built come off. Make sure that your critical areas ordinance is incorporating any of the new science. All of these things occur as part of the periodic update. You've got to address not only new statutory requirements, but also the fact that the facts on the ground are shifting underneath us as we move through the process. And this is the opportunity for you to catch up with both, both new requirements, and you got a new, you're resetting the 20-year horizon, you've got a new population forecast, you've got new targets, new revenue forecast, all these things will go into the planning process. So this is what, this is kind of a basic idea of what the process looks like, and I'm hoping this is, so, we're kind of, I don't know where exactly you are in this process, but I noticed we were sort of talking about this work program. Can you, I can't make that dot there, and I don't even show you if the dot shows up on, if the dot would show up on TV anyway. But there's a work program. Okay? That's one of the things you talked about today. That's a really important practice when you're talking about the periodic update. Okay? Because that's, that determines how are we going to allocate our, our resources. And in a lot of ways, the most scarce resource that you have, the, probably the narrow part of the pipe, is not your staff. You can probably hire more staff or engage more consultants if you really need to, but it's how many planning commission meetings and how many city council meetings do we have between now and the periodic update? And how, what else do we have to get done? Okay? Maybe you got a fire contract, maybe you got a collective bargaining agreement, there's a lot of other stuff a council has to do. There's a limited amount of attention that the governing bodies have, and you can't create a second planning commission. You can't create a second city council. Okay? So that's probably the narrow end of the pipe. So this work program is, I think, think really carefully about, okay, which meetings are we going to talk about this? When are we going to make a decision on this so that we can move forward? Okay? That's a really critical part, is having that work program. We've got checklists of all the new, all the requirements in the periodic update. I'd encourage you to use that checklist, to go through that checklist and use that to put together the scope of work for the periodic update process. Pub community engagement plan, regional coordination, the work that's going on in the PTAC associated with setting things like regional housing targets. You're going to be reviewing your existing plan and regulations, that's the checklist. You're going to be doing a lot of data gathering and analysis. You're going to be starting the SEPA process. And I want to make an important part about the SEPA process before you get too far into it. You know that in SEPA, when you're doing an environmental impact statement, there's three, you know, you generally have alternatives. I've seen this done two ways, when you're talking about a comprehensive plan update. One of them is the wrong way. Okay? The wrong way is this, you say, okay, I've got a high, a medium, and a low OFM forecast, so I'm going to have an alternative with lots of growth, and I'm going to have an alternative with no growth, and an alternative that's somewhere in the middle. And those are the three alternatives I'm going to run through the EIS process. That's the wrong way to do it, and here's why. Two reasons why. The first one is, you can't really control how much you grow. Okay? That's an assumption associated with the forecast. It's not a policy decision. You can, you can't decide how many people are going to move to Spokane in the next 20 years. That's something that's just going to happen. Okay? The second reason is this, I could probably tell you that a high population count is going to equal a high environmental impact, and I'm not going to charge you $500,000 for that. It's, you end up spending a lot of time thinking about something that's really pretty obvious. Instead, this is the right way to do it. You set your population forecast, you get your growth target. Okay? That becomes the purpose and need. And then, when you're doing your EIS, you're evaluating different alternatives to achieve that all have the same capacity number. Okay? Because then you're focusing the analysis on the decisions that are actually yours to make. You're not, you, you can't decide how much growth is going to occur, you have to forecast that, but you can decide how are we going to accommodate it. Okay? That's where your, that's where your SEPA analysis should be focused. So that's why, that's why I think that's a really important practice tip. You're going to be getting a lot of staff reports and maps, you're ultimately going to make a SEPA determination. At some point, this is going to come to us for 60-day review, and then you're going to go through the adoption process. So this is sort of, I mean, this is very impressionistic, and of course, every city is going to look a little bit different, but this is, this is kind of the basics. Going backwards again, sorry. An important part that I think is critical to think about the planning process as a whole, is the adoption of a plan is never one decision. It's always this series of nested decisions. And those decisions are constrained by the decisions we made before, and there are some parts of it that aren't ripe going, going into the future. So here's another thing, I bet if you've been to a public hearing or two, you've probably heard this before, too. Stop me if, if, you've already made a decision, you already, I know what you're going to do, you know what you're going to do, this whole thing is a joke. Why am I even here? Why are we even talking about this? You already made this decision. Right? You've probably heard that before. There's always an element of truth to that statement, because every decision that we make, and even if we're getting public information on it, okay? That comes in the context of a decision that somebody already made. Every decision exists in context, and is constrained by the decisions that came before. And there are some decisions that the public wants to stay in and are related to some project or, or activity, but those decisions aren't ripe yet. We can't really decide that yet, because we haven't got to that point in the process. And a practice tip for when you're working with public engagement is, whenever you're at, whenever you're taking input from the public, okay? Ask yourself this question: what discretion am I exercising on their behalf right now? And when you're talking to the public, make sure, as you're presenting the information, you're clearly articulating what decisions were made before, what decisions aren't ripe yet, and what decisions are we making right now? Because if you could clearly articulate that, then you can tell them, these are decisions I can help you with. These are the decisions you can actually influence with your comments today. And if you can focus the conversation there, you've got a much better probability that you're actually going to be able to do something useful in terms of making meaningful change. Because that's what people that come to a public hearing, that's what they really want. They want to know that the information they're providing, that the statements they're making are having a meaningfully, meaningful influence on the process. And the best thing you can do to equip them, to get what that is, to get what they're looking for, is making sure that they really understand what the decision is in front of them, in front of you today, and what discretion you're actually exercising. Regional, these are some of the issues that you'll cover. These are the requirements of the countywide planning policies. These are the things you're covering, sort of the steering committee working through SRTC, the growth targets, economic development. These are all things that are going to be in the countywide planning policies. A relatively new thing that is a requirement that there's tribal coordination at the regional level, so that the tribes are at the table when you're working on the PTAC and the steering committee and all that. A bill that passed a couple years ago requires that tribes are invited to the table and have a meaningful seat when you're dealing with regional issues. A little bit about growth targets. So growth targets, these come from the Office of Financial Management, and they're expressed as a range, a high range, a medium range, and a low range. Okay? And every forecast, every line, every point on that forecast is really a probability distribution. There's in the middle, the odds is where it's going to be really high that it's there. And then, as you get to the outside, the probability that it's going to be out, on the outer edges of that forecast are, are pretty low. And if you want to bench test the forecast and the OFM forecast, here's one of the best ways to do it. Okay? Look at what their 20-year forecast was 20 years ago, and compare it to your current population estimate, and see how close they came. They're scary good at this, actually. They're usually, for a large metro county, they're usually within 1% or 2%. Okay? It's kind of counterintuitive when you're thinking of forecasts. It's actually easier to do a 20-year population forecast than it is to do a five-year forecast. That seems counterintuitive to most people, but it's actually, the reason that is, is if you're doing a five-year forecast, you're really just trying to, you're really forecasting the business cycle. If I could forecast the business cycle, man, I'd be rich, I wouldn't be here. If you've got a 20-year forecast, you, a lot of that stuff kind of washes out, and you're down, down to some of the basic fundamentals. So it's a lot more predictable. So they're really close. The OFM medium is really close. So I would really encourage not going like to the high end or all the way to the low end. Look at sort of what has been the traditional drift in the 20-year forecast, probably around 1% or 2%, and I'd stay somewhere in there. New for this update with the passage of House Bill 1220 is the new housing element requirements. And that requires that you're planning for all economic segments of the population. So that, what that means is the growth target, there's what's called a housing needs analysis. And there's a process you have to go through at the regional, regional level to translate your total population forecast, and then break that out by income band, and then do the allocation by income band. So your growth target will not be expressed as a total population number, the way it was 10 years ago. Your growth target is going to be expressed in a set of unit numbers, or a set of household numbers by income. And then, our, our guidance is going to show you how to sort of translate income band into housing type, because the, the statute requires that we plan for housing by income band, but we actually regulate housing by unit type. So we kind of had to do some translation in our guidance to translate those two things into each other, just based on what units tend to be less expensive or more expensive, including things like supportive housing and emergency housing. Those are, those are parts of the, the housing obligation. So that's, that's the process you're going to be going through, and what's going to come out of that is then, a number by, is going to come, a production target by unit type. And then, there's the duty to make adequate provision for those different unit, for those different housing types, is going to be related to your land capacity analysis. In our development of regulations and in our zoning, can you actually build enough units of these different types to meet the, to meet the growth target over the 20-year period? That's, that's what's going to fall out of the housing, that's going to, what's going to fall out of the housing element process. We've also have the new housing, the new growth, the, the new climate element, and there's two pieces of this. There's the greenhouse gas reduction targets that require you sort of do evaluations. And the real, the requirement in statute that's really most critical is you have to identify the measures that the city is going to take that will have the effect of reducing per capita EMT and greenhouse gas emissions. Okay? And also, there is a resilience sub-element, which is dealing with identifying what are the impacts that we're already facing on climate change that we need to pay attention to? Which ones are, is our community most vulnerable to? And then, what policies or adjustments do we need to make to accommodate and account for the population, the, the impacts of climate change that we're already seeing? So there's the greenhouse gas emission component, and then there's the resilience component of, of the climate plan. And also, that, something that was passed as part of the, the climate bill, was there were also a lot of environmental justice principles that were baked into the, the climate element. So there's a requirement that when you're working on both resilience and greenhouse gas emissions policies, that you look for policies that will avoid worsening environmental health disparities, disparities in health outcomes, and disparities in impact that occur between different neighborhoods. And look for ways that you can implement these measures that will have the effect of benefiting portions of your community that have been historically harmed by environmental decisions and management decisions that we've made in the past. So we're also going to be providing grant pro, we're also going to be standing up a grant program that will go to community-based organizations that represent overburdened communities or vulnerable populations as a way to help them more meaningfully participate in the planning process. So look for that, that's, we're currently taking public input on that right now, on how we're going to operate the grant program, but that's moving forward as well. And we've got a list that we've put together of what are measures that you can adopt that have a demonstrated effect of, of, of reducing per capita greenhouse gas emissions. And we've got those, we've got that listed on our website, so you can pick from that. I would say, given that Spokane has done a tremendous amount of work on sustainability already, don't start from scratch. Look at what, I would say, go through the measures, look at what you've already done, and make sure you're claiming credit for those things that you've already done. Okay? That's really, that's going to be really critical. If you're out in front, you're not starting from scratch, we're not expecting that you're just going to pile more work on top. Make sure you're doing, working on, working from where you stand now, claim credit for what you've already done, integrate it into your existing process. I like the idea of the fact that you're talking about integrating it into the different elements rather than as a standalone element. There's upsides and downsides to both of those. I think the best upside to doing it the way that you're planning on doing it is that you've kind of already got systems in place to implement the different portions of the plan. If a plan gets done as a standalone document, it's a lot easier to get set aside and maybe not look at it when you're doing the actual implementation. Once it gets integrated into the other elements, it's a lot easier to do that. One of the things I would say, if you're going to do it that way, make sure you fill out the checklist, so you can clearly identify if the way you're meeting requirements are out the checklist so you can clearly identify if the way you're meeting requirements are kind of in different places, that you sort of identify, okay, this is where I'm meeting this requirement, and this is where I'm meeting this requirement. So that a person who's trying to follow along at home can see exactly where things did incorporate, and that also helps make sure you didn't miss a spot. How am I doing on time?
You've probably got about five more minutes.
Okay. Implementation, capital facilities, I want to make, I'm going to use my last five minutes making a really critical point about capital facilities planning. And it's that you, when you're talking about the cost of capital facilities, okay, you don't really buy cities by the house, you buy it by the street, right? So you've got a piece of land you're trying to develop, right? You put in some homes, they're going to need a street, okay? That line in front of it, that represents the street, that also represents the pipes under the street, it represents how far the school bus has to travel, how far, how long it's going to take the police or the fire department to get there if somebody has a heart attack, okay? That a lot of your costs can be expressed by that line, all right? All of these different things. It also includes impacts, things like GHG emissions and total impervious surface. Those are really driven by how many of those lines you have to draw. So you've got a new commercial facility, that's going to take new roads, maybe they actually pay for those roads through some kind of LID, okay? Well, if you're adding new houses there, are you building a new road? No, you're not. You already got the road there, okay? If that store goes away, do the roads you built to serve that store go away? They don't go away, okay? Store's gone, it's not generating any sales tax revenue, it's not generating any jobs, okay? Your carrying costs for that road are still there, okay? So those spatial decisions are really critical, okay? Another piece about impact, if you're doing your impacts and you're assessing your impacts and you're doing it by an average cost across the whole jurisdiction, you're missing a really important component, okay? No matter how good the design is, okay, you put Kendall Yards out on the edge of the city, it's going to have a very different environmental performance, it's going to have a very different impact, okay? Location needs to design for breakfast. So make sure when you're talking about the way you think about impacts, the way you think about system development charges, that you're thinking about location, okay? Because location really drives your costs a lot. And the marginal cost of an additional housing unit, where that exists in the community has a significant impact on what the actual marginal cost of accommodating that new housing unit will be. So a few points on that. As you're working through this, make sure you're doing a revenue forecast associated with your capital facility plan. You're not looking just at the cost, but you're also looking at revenue. And when you're talking and thinking through development, I would say, don't think like a regulator, think like an equity partner, okay? You're putting a lot of investment into the streets, you're going to have carrying costs on those streets long into the future, okay? Even if the developer pays 100% of the costs of the infrastructure, which is, in practice, they don't, they couldn't afford it, really, you've still got it on into the future, okay? A free road is not a free lunch, it's a free puppy, okay? That's yours, and you're going to own it. So make sure that you're really accounting for those costs when you're talking about extending new services or new facilities. So I'm running out of time, so with that, I really thank you for your attention, I thank you for your time, and look forward to working throughout the process. My team is here, we've got Michelle, she's our planner for Spokane County, we're covering the cities in Spokane, and we've got Suzanne Austin, she's doing all our technical assistance on the periodic update process. So we're here to help, and thank you again for having me.
Thank you so much, thank you. Wow. More than I've known about growth management.
If you have any questions or if we have any time for that.
Any quick questions? All right, then we're going to go on to ARPA money, another bane of our existence here at City Council. Again, you guys can stay or you can dismiss yourself. Both council members, we got some discussions around ARPA funding. I don't know if you all got the sheets that Jacobi sent out to you. I don't know if we have the capacity, if one of our LA's have the capacity, you can put that on the screen.
I am not bringing the sheets that Jacobi sent.
That's true. Yeah, I love it, I love it, I love it. You know, we were going to do a dot exercise, and we decided not to do that because some of our committees are still meeting. And I want to talk about some of the work groups that are out there right now. And I'm going to start, yeah, you don't want anybody calling you by mistake, take your name tags with you. The first one is sub-area planning. So under the first bucket, we had talked about sub-area planning for each one of our districts. Sub-area planning for West Central, sub-area planning for East Central, and sub-area planning for District One. I believe the sub-area planning in District One got rolled into the Logan District Plan, and so I think we're going to pull it up currently. Let's see if we can find it. So actually, it was Spencer on sub-area plan, I think he just stepped out, and Terry Stripes, so with myself.
Is Terry here?
Terry is not here, but I will, oh, Spencer's still here. Trying to figure out the presentation.
We were going to do a follow-up meeting, so we didn't really, do you remember any?
Right. So the reality is, sub-area planning had not been allocated for District Two or District Three. And there is about $600,000 still sitting. And we had asked the planning department when they felt those funds could be encumbered, because they have to be encumbered by the end of this year, if that could be accommodated in their work plan. And what did you tell me, Spencer, about the sub-area planning through the ARPA process?
Sorry, I've been working on computer issues. So you're just looking for kind of a general update on?
Right, just on the sub-area plan.
So the plan in Northeast is progressing, and it involves the ARPA money, but it also includes brownfield money and a number of other grant sources. So that is underway, has been underway for a while, and is the furthest along. On East Central, which was one of the other sub-area plan locations, there is a lot of planning going on related to the North Spokane Corridor. And so we have been trying to identify the best way to engage in that process without kind of overwhelming the community with too many things going on. That's been our primary concern. There are some options, I think, for moving ahead with that. One thing that we're interested in considering is the possibility to, I guess, narrow the focus a bit onto the Fifth Avenue Corridor and maybe look at some land use changes there consistent with the community's vision for Fifth Avenue. And then also potentially look at a couple of locations currently owned by WashDOT that may eventually be opened up for development. So I guess just kind of narrowing the focus on what that plan might entail. On the West Central side, there is planning and design work going on currently, and that's funded through the TIF. So that's another situation where we're trying to figure out how to engage with the community in a way that doesn't overwhelm them, but instead leverages what's going on currently and then kind of builds upon it. So we're, I think that's the least advanced of those projects. I guess that's kind of the update I could provide. I certainly have thoughts about how we might proceed with any of those plans, but is that what you're looking for?
I think when the subcommittees meet again and get more focused on really where we're at, and can we get those funds encumbered by the end of this year to get that work done, or will it go back in the clawback bucket is what we're really discussing today. All right, thanks. The next one we're going to talk about is childcare. And Michelle is here. And councilmembers, the point, you want to talk about childcare, you want to lead it off?
Sure, so the group met and we chatted about changing the parameters a little bit to allow the distribution of the funds as grants to people needing childcare assistance, so families. They had, community-minded enterprises has not distributed very much, but they found that the current parameters on it were really restrictive. So this work group is councilmember Cathcart, me and council president Wilkerson. We all met and advised to loosen the parameters on that, and Community Minded Enterprises is expecting that they will fully distribute that funding by the end of the period.
Correct. We have an amendment to the contract coming forward at Finance Committee on the 26th to explain the change in the parameters. I'm going to try and go off the top of my head. We went from 120% AMI up to 150% AMI with Tier One and giving a subsidy of 100%, 100%, 75%, 75%, 50%, 50%, 25%, 25%, changing it from three months to six months. Then we made them Tier Two, up to 200% AMI, and I think we started at 50%, 50%, 50%, and then went 25%, 25%, 25%. I could be wrong, but I think that's off my head. And then we removed the question that there had to be a break in employment so that those essential workers that could, had to work through the pandemic could benefit from the subsidy. And then the last change was in people that are employed by the facility that are related to the people that are employed, that own the facility, could qualify for the retention bonus if they have the same qualifications as the other workers in the facility.
You got it.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions around, councilmembers, about that one? That was, once we got the feedback, and there was a whole study done by Eastern Washington University around childcare that really made us think a little bit differently. All right, well, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So those funds will be, we feel confident they will be dispersed. The next one is around the Equity Navigator Service, which we are looking at changing that to Language Access. Councilmember Cathcart, do you want to speak on Language Access, or are you good?
Yeah, so essentially, the language under the Equity Navigator's provision essentially encompasses the Language Access-type programming. And so we're still in the process of trying to look for the bid, get some bids back from procurement, from a kind of a technological solution on that. There had been some ongoing conversations last year with one tech company that were put on pause just to make sure that we weren't running afoul of any procurement issues. And so my understanding is those conversations continue from the staff side, and we're just waiting for some feedback on what those total costs will be to get a program going.
I think there's a little nuance under this. We keep saying change it to Language Access or Equity Navigators, really, it's a big umbrella that encompasses it all. We did not want, I personally did not want to totally cut out Equity Navigators because we will need some people who are really doing that trusted messenger piece as we transition to the Language Access, but really, we see it all as one, it's not one or the other, it's both. So we feel those funds will be encumbered by, go ahead.
No, I would add, we're trying to get an idea if we actually would spend the $250,000 remaining dollars left, it's two, where the subtitles are right now. So it's $259,000, I think, thousand dollars. And so after procurement comes back, we'll have a better idea. We weren't sure exactly how much it'll be at this point. So right now, our recommendation from the committee is to keep all that money and report back in a couple of months about that.
I would not expect to have a lot left, but there may be some, and we're still waiting for those numbers, so.
The next one is projects of citywide significance.
Who's in that work group?
That was Terry Stripes and Steve Marlene. Anything of citywide significance?
Well, I think we should have the councilmembers report back because they're the ones that are making the recommendations.
So I know.
We didn't meet.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back on that one. Did you have something to say, Michelle, though? You were getting up already. Youth behavioral health.
So that work group is me, councilmember Bingle, and councilmember Navarrete. We met, we discussed the remaining $1.7 million for youth behavior health and looking at different options on how to disperse that. We'd been talking about, we've been talking about this as a council already about whether we should look towards provider services types, like gap funding, that we could look at longer-term funding and kind of piloting programs. So we were each going to go consult with community groups and report back. I have a meeting with the school district next week. I also met with the West Spokane Wellness Coalition, who has lots of programming, that they are really needing more program, social workers to expand the programming. And they do a lot of like group supports around tobacco use, vaping, depression, suicide ideation. And so they said if they could get four more people, they could expand those services. They partner with Eastern Washington University and get graduate students who are working on social work, and that they provide free services and kind of that mentorship program. So it's building a pipeline of workers, it's also providing classes to students right now. And they have, they were sending me their reports and outcomes of demonstrated decreased use of tobacco use, vaping use, decreased suicide ideation and oppression use. And so that's a possible partnership where they just don't have the workers to do that, and it's not one-on-one clinical either, so it's more that support group base. And the meeting with the school district next week is about expansion of after-school activities, and I don't know if you had?
You have a comment?
No, I still have to meet with my community members.
All right, so we're thinking we're hanging out.
So that one, we were going to reconvene in about a month, is where we left off to see how much we think we could disperse on the 1.7 million and get that into contract by the end of the year. The other option, too, is that there was remaining funding from capital projects that we just allocated the funding to the native project, but there were other applicants at that time that needed funding of a million dollars. They could easily spend a million dollars on that funding in the next year. So there's a potential of those capital projects were kind of more clinical, and finishing those projects, we're looking for the new partnerships, too. So we were going to reconvene within a month and make a recommendation on how to allocate that.
And the next list, community centers, that was 1.5 mil. Lots of discussion around community centers because first, we had said as a council, the three community centers, East Central, West Central, Northeast, were city-owned facilities, we could invest in them and let them grow their programming, see what happens. Then we did a 360 on them and said, well, those are our buildings, we want to do something else. So there is some conversation and confusion going on about how that money will be spent. I believe they all have had their capital facilities plans, which we should get a report from.
We should report back what we.
Okay, what'd you guys talk about?
Do you want to talk about the community centers?
Well, yeah, we're just waiting on the West Central piece.
Yeah, and then I think we were talking about the HVAC for East Central.
Yeah, and so West Central, I talked to them this week, met with their executive team, and the report back is that they have lots of ideas that they didn't know that they could even think about. One was potentially updating some current facility use that they haven't had. Other is purchasing a house next door that they can operate work training program out of it. And so they're very quickly trying to come up with a proposal because they know the timeline, but yeah, they definitely think there's some improvements and some ADA improvements. The facility studies showed that it was likely not significant improvements in the near term, and so they're looking at the expansion of programs.
And kudos to West Central, they've done a significant amount of maintenance on their own, raising their own money, keeping and building up. So Kim's been an amazing executive director.
Council president?
Yes.
Yeah, first I'd heard about the house, I'd just be interested to know what the cost-benefit comparison would be between just an add-on to the existing facility versus buying a neighboring house, but that'd just be my question.
I think they're very much in the beginning phase of thinking.
Neighborhood business districts.
So that group, again, was, who was it?
Who was that?
Councilmember Cathcart, councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, myself, I haven't been to meet.
That one we met, and basically, there's already a consultant that is just contracted last week, that's doing outreach to the four neighborhoods that we talked about previously. So that's Hilliard, South Perry, North Monroe, and Garland. And that consultant's going out in beginning of March, and they're going to come back with a proposal by the end of March of how they think that spending should be spent in creating a sustainable funding source in the long term. And so they, I think that, we said that we'll wait until they come back with that proposal, and they've been on track on that.
Great. And then the last one is multicultural centers for a million dollars. And we realized there's not much you can do with a million dollars for a multicultural center. So I think Dave Steele's going to report.
Well, no, so that was councilmember Bingle, councilmember Finland, and me. And we met and we looked at RFP parameters for that, and the recommendation that we have. And the recommendation that we have is splitting it across basically 10 different, uh, grants to community groups. Like they can use it on their capital campaign programs because there's a lot of community groups that have different phases that they're in. Some are like reimbursing for their, their plans that they've already committed. Some want to, to hire project consultants to help them create a, uh, capital campaign. And so it'd be, it would likely be wherever they're at within that phase and that they can apply to that. Um, there's also a partnership with Empire Health Foundation right now that they are, uh, providing technical assistance grants to these organizations so that they are kind of beefing up their governance models and structures that then this can help coincide with at the same time and that they can kind of run with it as they're going. So that is the, the recommendation from the group. And, um, we had some parameters that we were sending to the team to start drafting an RFP to go out soon.
Okay, councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I, uh, if there's 10 groups ready to go, that's great. I would not favor allowing the use of these dollars to hire a consultant for a capital campaign. That does not seem appropriate to me. But for actual capital investments, things like that where they're ready to go, absolutely, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So the, the group that, as we talked about that, um, we just didn't have enough subsidy. It couldn't make a big enough impact. A hundred thousand dollars for one group wouldn't get them very far with their projects. They all have much larger projects and so, and they're very early with their capital campaigns for raising millions of dollars. Truly, each group needed millions of dollars. And so, um, that was, that was our recommendation.
I just don't think we should be involved in private fundraising for outside organizations, so.
Great. So that's kind of, uh, some of the projects that we've been meeting about. If you're part of a group, please meet with them. Is Jacoby able to advance the screens or who has, who has the screen?
Yes, council president, this is the potential reallocation.
Thank you.
Of, uh, projects coming down the pike.
So there are some funds that are not encumbered. Uh, the police vehicles, I think if you remember, we had allocated, that was going to come out of the general fund, the 3 million dollars. And based on our financial commitment to ourselves and the city, we looked at monies that was available to bring that out of ARPA dollars and not impact our reserve account. Um, we supported Expo 50 for 250. We need the search for police and fire. And then the projects, Language Access, Equity Navigators, to start looking at how we can encumber those funds. So any conversations around that? I think I've kind of shopped those around.
Yeah, I'll just, Jacoby, if you could go back to the yellow, the last list. So the ARPA group, which is councilmember Bingle, me and council president, uh, we met and talked about those yellow projects were kind of the ones that we were identifying as clawbacks that weren't really moving forward or re-designating, clarifying Equity Navigators in this case. But the municipal building capital, there's really no path forward and plan for it. EV stations and the projects of citywide significance, one, we were recommending that for, uh, clawback to reallocate those projects to. And so that came out to, I think it was about six and a half million dollars of funding that we could reallocate right now. And our recommendation as a committee, if Jacoby could go the next slide, is based on these conversations that we've been having. So that would be a 3.7 million dollar reallocation of the six and a half, um, towards those items. And so, uh, wanting to see if people were comfortable with that, wanting to wait, have more conversations about it.
Yeah, comfortable with these, I, what about the remaining delta? What's the thought there?
You can speak to that and then we're going to have the mayor come and speak.
So the remaining delta, the, the, the idea is that right now we would have conversation and the mayor's here to talk about that too, about her ideas. Each council member can propose your ideas of what you think the remaining should be. So that would be about 3 million dollars right now. But there could be potential further clawbacks depending on how each of those groups is progressing throughout the year. And we just heard those updates. Um, and so there's kind of questions if we want to do this in chunks, if we want to wait and do it more at the end. There's still a lot of questions around that, about how to do that. But the idea is that it would come to Finance Committee next month is what we had talked about yesterday to do kind of the dot exercise about where we would like to reallocate and prioritize funding.
Councilmember Bingle.
And I would just, you know, remind us all that again, uh, the dollars we don't use, we do lose. And so, um, one of the things that we should think through on, on here is again, what is a date that we need to be under contract by? What is a date that we need to know that, uh, things are actually going to be able to get spent to where we have that emergency eject button towards we, we pull it so that we don't lose out on any of these dollars? So when we go to finance and we get ready for this dot exercise, also be thinking through what are the dates that we feel comfortable with before we, and it needs to be written into the contracts that if you can't do it by a certain amount, by a certain date, it's, it's getting yanked back.
Absolutely, absolutely, great, thank you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I don't know what, if we want to have the mayor come and do her, her part first, but I, I do have a couple of thoughts that I could share in terms of how I think we could spend some of that delta. Um, one, I just, I want to make sure that we're not putting it in ongoing operations, obviously. That, that's, that's a concern. But second, you know, one idea that I put forward in our very original list was concerning neighborhood lighting. And I think from just a, maybe a bigger point of view, both downtown, our neighborhoods have significant lighting issues. But also along with that are potential SEPTED investments that we could be making that would be improving public safety in one-time ways that would actually be a pretty significant improvement. And so, uh, just a proposal I would make would be to put money into a bucket that's specifically for that type of stuff across the city.
All right, thank you. Mayor, or, oh, councilman Dylan?
Just, um, yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of the, uh, potential, you know, reallocation. Um, I will say though that I hope that we can come together and really reaffirm a commitment about the municipal building and, um, the future of that and a path moving forward. Um, I mean, I, I know that this wasn't the right time, um, you know, and this is, we can't go into reserves. This is what's in front of us, we, we needed to make this purchase. But, um, it does continue, I think, to, to really fester, to hear it yesterday. And, uh, we really do need to figure out a plan.
Great, thank you. Mayor, do you want to come up and, or you, or your team, whomever, talk about? Sure, sure, or you can come up, you can sit, you can be wherever you want to be. You want to be down there, you can come up here.
More like a conversation.
Yeah, we got plenty of seats today. I know.
It's cozy.
We just let the planning commission go, yeah.
Thank you, thank this opportunity.
Well, obviously we have, um, we have Matt here, Steve McDonald, Chief Lundgren, Garrett and Dawn. So, um, I'll make some sort of overarching comments and, um, more, uh, more along the lines of principles I think we can utilize at, both at this point in time and going forward. And, uh, some priorities that I think we have at the administration level. And thank you for your thoughtful, uh, process of, of looking at what's there and your realistic perspective that there's a, there's a deadline for getting these dollars out the door. Uh, one thing, uh, I'd like to suggest is that, because we are talking about one-time money here, I hope that we can think about ways where we could utilize some of these funds in a, uh, short-term impactful way, if, if possible. And we have some ideas about that. And I know that ultimately, um, there was a lengthy process to go through to come up with these different, uh, allocations to different community needs. And I see them all as valuable community needs, so there's no question about that. I do believe that there are some of these areas that overlap with other funding opportunities at the state level. That, and if we'll look just at what's happening in the state budget right now, there are, um, capital programs in commerce for community facilities. There's a new emphasis on equity. There's a new program to, uh, which community organizations can apply to, to build their capacity. And so I just want to encourage us to think about ways in which we can, with such a small amount of funds, we can potentially help direct, uh, community partner organizations or maybe even be a partner with them as they apply for state funds. And let's get the maximum amount of state funds that we can. I also want to point out that, that we'll be working together on what has been called the 1590 money. I hope we can brand that something more like what it really is, which is Housing Access. And within that fund, there is the opportunity for behavioral health as well. And so that is a significant, um, fund that you have created through previous council action. And let's think about ways to get those housing options off the ground. Again, leveraging where we can with, with partnering state funds and/or other community partners and, uh, potentially having a bigger long-term impact. As you go through this exercise and if you identify, uh, I, I agree with, uh, um, reprioritization that you've already laid out, um, the, the swap in order to, uh, accommodate the police vehicles and the, and the other things on that list. Um, but as you continue to go through this exercise, if there's a way to identify even further funds that cannot be well utilized at this point, um, we're prepared to talk about both some community safety, um, housing homelessness and digital equity priorities that I think we could, uh, with, with these funds make some significant strategic and short-term impact investments. It's hard to lay out the specific details of that until we know really how much we're talking about. But it's a conversation we'd like to dig in and have with you quickly over the next month. So, because I know you are, um, interested in getting to a, a framework of decision here and, and we are too. And so we're actively identifying some opportunities in that regard.
So Mayor, just, let us give us, or any one of your team, just give us a high level. And I just kind of zoomed in on the behavioral health options of 1590. We know there is a percentage that's set aside for that. I don't know if it's specifically behavioral health. We, I remember reading it as wraparound services, supportive services, which is definitely a component of that. But there are so many pieces to that, under that percentage amount. So, Dawn, you have a comment on that or?
I think Steve's got some ideas.
Yes, um, thank you, council president. So my understanding in 1590 is there's a certain chunk of that money that can be used not just for behavioral health facilities, but for the services themselves.
Right.
So that, I think, is something that we should keep in mind when we're looking at ARPA, which is one-time. And we've got this now 15 million dollar amount of money, increasing at 7 million every year, available. We should be looking at the behavioral health aspects of that, which we need desperately here, as you know.
Right, I agree, the wraparound services. Uh, councilmember Cathcart and councilmember Bingle.
Well, yeah, with, with respect, I mean, when that was passed three years ago, the conversation was housing, nothing else. And for three years, some of us who were still on this council have fought and fought and fought to make sure that those dollars stayed with housing and were not used for other purposes. And so it sounds like we're kind of back to sweeping those funds for other purposes. I know it's allowable, but in terms of what the intent of 1590 for when it was passed by this council was for capital, building, housing.
And that's, that's what's in the SMC as I understand it, and I'll go back and look. It clearly articulates the fact that you can use this both for buildings of behavioral health and for services. So if you have a permanent supportive housing building, the real issue is on that is how do you pay for those services? That's the expensive part. And that 1590 is able, in our SMC as I understand it, to be used for that.
Maybe I could, I think there's a way to accommodate what you're talking about, um, as well, councilman Cathcart. I mean, we want the maximum number of units and we want to get them, we want to get them going soon, so that's our goal. So what I see here is this fund we can utilize to leverage with projects that are already, uh, planned uh, within the, within the community, um, that have different potential funding streams to partner with us. So if we were just to spend 15 million dollars, it, it could go like that. But I think it can be utilized in such a way. So for example, there's the, a program called Apple Health in Homes. And the idea there is that some state funds come for the capital side and some HCA funds come for the behavioral health side. So that might be a place where 1590 can partner with the, and, and make sure that we can get those units underway. So I don't see it, um, as, as much going to the behavioral health portion as going to projects that are permanent supportive housing units in which there is a behavioral health component, if you, if you get what I'm saying there.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. And it, for me, I guess my goal with 1590 is to maximize the number of units at the most cost-effective level, right? And I think one of the things we've not at least attempted to do that would make a ton of sense is to go out to existing developers, builders who are in the process of doing multifamily and say, hey, we will either buy down or we will pay up for, for units. You know, no mandatory inclusionary type stuff, but, but we will pay up or, or buy down. And I think that that would be the quickest way to, to get the most cost-efficient number of units. Um, and we could probably ma- get a lot of units with the, the amount of 15 to 20 million dollars that we have in that 1590 fund right now. But if there's opportunities to match where we're still using those money, the, those dollars for actual capital and we're not sweeping it for other purposes, but we can get some additional services from the state, that, that sounds good. We just need to see what that plan looks like.
Yeah, we're looking forward to digging in with you on that. And I'm just going to start calling it Spokane Housing Access Fund from now on. Somebody else wants to call it, because I don't think anybody understands 1590. And there's a new House Bill 1590 this year already, so that's why we should probably do it.
Yeah, and I would just, you know, um, I know everybody remembers this, but we made those funds, we restricted those funds more than what the state did when we took it from, uh, 60% that had to be used on, on housing and 40% that could have been used on services. We, as a council, reduced that number to only 25% could be used on services. So, uh, moving forward, that's an important distinction that, uh, is actually just set by code. And depending on what's going on, those are things that we could alter depending on, uh, you know, how the plan goes. Uh, one of the other things with the Spokane Housing Access Fund is that, thank you, yeah, absolutely. Um, is that, uh, you know, we, there's also a lot of opportunity, which, which everybody on this dice understands, instead of fully funding projects, to be partially funding projects, to try and expand the effectiveness of those dollars to get many more units actually jumpstarted as a, as opposed to fully funding 50 units or something like that, so.
Then let's go on to, uh, that was about, um, behavioral health. So talk to me about public safety, what you're thinking there.
Uh, well, this will be interesting because I think it needs to fit in with our overall conversation of where we're headed with the budget and where we're headed with trying to close the budget gap. So, um, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. I do think the conversation that we're having in our community safety work group about integrating of the, the behavioral health teams that are currently out there. So, um, the police unit, the fire unit, the, the cares program within fire, and then the nonprofit units. Uh, in our first meeting, we started mapping out, uh, those different resources, uh, how they are accessed when people call 311 or 911, uh, and then what happens after that. And there was a clear, uh, agreement within the room that there's room for a better coordinated approach and an expansion of services beyond some of the current hours in which some of the organizations operate. So, uh, I think this is something that, uh, fits, uh, council priorities. I'll just go straight to the heart of it. Whether you supported Prop One or, or not, I think we all support the idea that if we could flip from a completely complaint-based system of emergency response into a more proactive outreach system in which we are contacting individuals with the resources prior to the emergency response, that that would be a win-win. And so what we would offer you is the potential to partner with this emerging, um, agreement that we're coming up with in coordination. And I, I believe we will get, um, some state resources in the, um, budget, in the supplemental budget. Uh, so we would combine with those and then really. with those and then really utilize them for this coordinated response. That's the basic. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything. Chief Lundgren was also part of that conversation.
Thank you. You hit the nail on the head, Mayor. And, you know, trying to find an approach that we can get further upstream, instead of being so reactive in our approach, I think would be beneficial.
Yeah, so the CHAZ team works during the work week. I'm sorry, the police team is?
The Behavioral Health Unit. And I believe FIRE is the BRU.
BRU, yeah. And those are both either, one's Monday through Thursday and one's Tuesday through Friday, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so if we could get to a weekend response, an after-hours response, and a coordination of information, I think that would be very beneficial. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I like the idea of going upstream as much as possible, instead of being complaint-based, you know, being proactive. I would like to also see us have an emphasis on being proactive on the effects of, to the surrounding areas of what's happening there. I mean, obviously, going downtown, there's just litter and trash all over the place, and those are things that have to be cleaned up, graffiti all over the place. And so as we're being proactive in this, I'm hoping that that helps reduce that. But in the meantime, those are serious concerns for my district, that we need to get the litter and the trash cleaned up as soon as possible, because it makes it look like literal trash, so.
And I'll just ask Mayor, on capacity, a lot of things we talk about, or needs that we see, are we really, do you have the staffing or the capacity to meet all the demands that are coming in pretty fast and furious from the community?
I think at this point, what we're mostly looking at is a coordination. And there will be, there may be conclusions we reach down the road about where we would want to put additional staffing. But right now, we're not looking at a staffing component as much as a coordination component. The staffing could be in, simply within the framework of how to keep everybody connected, but I think to be determined. I don't know. Dawn, you were also in that meeting. Did you want to add anything?
No, I think that was a good summary. I think there's a lot of agreement in the nonprofit sector that having a coordinated proactive response would certainly help them get ahead of the challenges that we're experiencing, to your point, Councilmember Bingle, as well. But if we're proactive instead of reactive, some of those challenges don't become as prominent. So anyway, we can support expanding those hours for services through various partnerships, I think is a win for many, many different kind of needs locally.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, I certainly support the concept. I just, from an ARPA perspective, I wonder, you know, is this not an ongoing expense? And how would we, how would we pay for this in the out years?
Well, I'm not exactly 100% clear on this, but I'm hopeful that we can then also starting to look at how both cooperation with behavioral health resources at the county level and the opioid settlement funds might start to play into this. And my understanding is that there is, there is the group that's been designated at the county level, but we need to designate a city group as well. And so, ready to get, get working on that. But I do see that it will take some time to, potentially, to get through the framework of allocating those funds. So maybe this is a bit of a bridge to the type of system that we think will work better. Frankly, we may need to be talking about a public safety levy at some point fairly soon, if we, if we really want to talk about how we're going to sustain some of the investments that we've, that we want to make, and that we actually have already committed to in terms of our public safety workforces. Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah. I mean, this is music to my ears. I think that this is a really welcome direction to move in. I think that there's a lot of win-win opportunities here. I think it really does, and we've seen from other cities that have implemented similar coordinated measures, how much added value this is for law enforcement and FIRE, who are so often responding to a lot of these calls in our capacity. And I think, you know, again, with some of the other jurisdictions, we've seen after this initial investment and getting over that hump, then there is more opportunities for funding and kind of that long-term sustainable growth.
Right. Dawn, you'll have to come back. Do you, Councilmember Bingle?
I just wanted to give kind of an update on some planning we're doing around the shelter system that I think plays into part of the homelessness conversations we've been having about 1590. So if your comment, Councilmember Bingle, is about this, feel free to go first. I don't want to jump on it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this, this conversation, I think, is great. And I think it also has a natural fit with what we've been trying to do by establishing a regional homeless authority, when we're talking about other jurisdictions, the different coordinated efforts that we're doing there. And so I guess, Mayor and team, how do you see those things working together?
Definitely see them as consistent with each other. I have yet to attend my first meeting on, of that group, but I think it's coming up. And so, working towards that, but not waiting for that to be formed, I think is, is the philosophy that we have.
So I think one of the things that we're starting, and this is partially coming out of recommendations from the Transition Committee, but also certainly, I know, questions and requests that council had made prior to his administration coming in, which was really looking at an audit of the existing shelter system and kind of rethinking how we operate shelter as a region. So we have a temp seasonal employee who started yesterday, who's going to actually facilitate that kind of community conversation with existing shelter providers, but also other engaged stakeholders, whether it's neighborhood councils, public safety, behavioral health, nonprofit providers who aren't in shelter but provide services inside shelters, right? So a holistic conversation. And it's going to be kind of a two-fold process. First, doing an audit of what the current shelter system is. I think to some of the behavioral health comments that we've heard, the shelter system has become a catch-all for people who, emergency shelter is not designed to serve. And that includes people who are better served in, you know, adult family homes or assisted living facilities. It includes folks who are better served by behavioral health systems based on mental health or chemical dependency concerns. And emergency shelters is not designed for populations that we're currently seeing need to access those services. So an audit that's inclusive of what shelter is doing, but also who else needs to be at the table helping provide services to this population, because emergency shelter will never be robustly funded enough to address some of those far more complex acute needs. So that's kind of step one that we're rolling out. And then the follow-up to that will be a similar group of folks, really drafting up, what are the recommendations for a future state of sheltering services in Spokane? That's not about an individual shelter or provider, but if we were kind of redesigning what our shelter system needed to look like, what would that be? Knowing that we need to get away from, from large conglomerate settings, knowing that we need to disperse some things outside of the downtown core, and really thinking about, what can that look like differently? And then who needs to come to the table to help solve for the individuals that are currently in shelter that need to be in a different, more serviced environment? So that's, we're finalizing that timeline and plan, and that will certainly come to council. But hoping to have that accomplished here in the next two to three months, so that we can make some really critical decisions about one-time capital funding to help meet that expectation. And that might be a place that ARPA funds could help do some of that work.
I'm going to pivot really quickly. I just want a quick, a quick comment around your digital equity comment. What is that looking like?
Yeah, I think Steve McDonald's talked to several, or maybe most of you yet, maybe not some of the newer council members. So Steve, why don't you say a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, we've had a number of discussions, and they kind of culminated in council approving the city ordinance on digital strategy and broadband goals in 2023. We've been making some adjustments to those. We had initially hoped to get some ARPA funding for that. And I still think there's a way going forward. We can do a focus on digital equity, on a scalable wireless network that would have a pilot project in a neighborhood and include the opportunity to scale, to get out to the three PDAs and other neighborhoods that need it, to provide a baseline service. And so we've made some adjustments to our original plan that we talked to many of you about. We're having a follow-up meeting tomorrow, and hope to present that to the mayor in the next week or 10 days. And just one last thing is, on that, is that one of the proposals that we had put out there is to take back the $1,004 that's left in projects of citywide significance, which I strongly support the use of those funds for that. But due to the nature of construction, we can't be assured that all of that money will be out the door and contracted or committed by the end of the year. So we can backfill that with revenue that we have, retained earnings that we have in the DSC Enterprise Fund. So for a total of $3 million, but of only, say, a million and a half of new reallocated funds, we could get to a point where we would have a once-in-a-lifetime chance to get this started. And so we'll have some details and come back and show you how it's slightly different than what we had proposed earlier. Yes, Michael?
Bingle, did you, Councilmember Bingle, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, my, my point, back to the homelessness discussion and the response and everything like that, you know, it, I just, this is a separate conversation, but I'm worried that the conversation is heading away from us engaging with the other jurisdictions in what we're doing, if we're sort of reimagining how we do it on our own, because we're currently, I mean, the vast majority of the homeless response system. And it took us a long time to get people at the table to be listening and participating. And I would hate for us to, again, decide, because we've already done this once, right? We already did it when we did a resolution that was separate than all the others. If we start doing this again, I worry that we start to irritate our partners again. We just, we have to be engaging with those other.
No, the intention is that all of those jurisdictions are part of the stakeholder group and coming to the table. George Dallin and I, the county, and Gloria Mance from the Valley have already started quarterly, well, actually, I think they're bi-monthly meetings, to have regional discussions about how we address these issues. So the intention is for, for this to be a regional discussion. We're just trying to get it off the ground and facilitate it.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, so two things. First, on this one, it sounds like we're kind of duplicating efforts. If we've got this regional authority conversations ongoing, and now we're having separate conversations on a regional. So I just, I think maybe coalescing those together might be more productive in terms of keeping people at the table and having some kind of outcome that really will get us to a point where we can really remove homeless services from what the city does entirely, and moving it to that regional authority, which I think it should be the goal.
So certainly, the conversations that she's facilitating at the staff level need to happen, and they need to happen now. And so I'm ready to attend any of the other regional homeless meetings that are, that are set up, and, realistically, I think, working through an agreement that gets signed, and shifting employees and funds into a new entity that's going to stand up a new administration, and then go through its own process of administering funds. I've done that with the Life Science Discovery Fund, and with the Spokane Teaching Health Center, and three or four other organizations that are currently successful, that, or were successful in their time. And it takes two or three years to do it right. So my sense is that we really need to be on two tracks. Want to work and form, form an organization that can work region-wide successfully, with an adequate amount of city representation in the voting structure. At the same time as we work through that, I totally support the idea of these groups getting together and working through some ways to coordinate, and maybe bring some projects forward that we could get things off the ground. And who knows, maybe city, county, and everyone can sign on to a, to a big project. And I think having, that we could, that would be a navigation center. And we could say, we're, we're starting the regional cooperation even if the regional entity isn't fully formed. That's my goal.
Yeah. And, and we can have a lot more conversation on that going forward. But as far as digital equity goes, I mean, I just want to make sure emphatically state how important that is, and how much, you know, I think we should support that. I think switching those two funds makes a lot of sense, using the potential of the DSC funds for some pieces of citywide significance, again, makes a ton of sense. And that Logan pilot, I think, is going to be critical to demonstrating what we can do. And then the partnerships with the PDAs, we potentially, from that ordinance we passed and some of the deals that we've started to see, can see some revenue generated from this and help create a pay for. And so I think this should be a high priority because of the revenue potential that this whole thing has.
Well.
Yeah, so I was just wondering if you could speak to like, the dollar amounts, because ultimately, this is going to come down to dollar amounts. I think the digital equity, you were saying a million and a half?
So a total of $3 million, it would be the ask. But almost a million and a half, that's going to come from something that you guys already want to reallocate. That would be the projects of citywide significance. But because that project's citywide significance is going to things that we also all support, and you guys support, affordable housing, we can backfill that with DSC Enterprise Fund. And there's enough of a nexus there in the Enterprise Fund, because that's going to defray or waive certain permit fees for affordable housing. So we can backfill that. So the net new amount that we'd be asking for is a million and a half, but that would come in addition to reallocating about $1,004 from the projects of citywide significance.
About $3 million total from ARPA.
Total.
I'm viewing it as a total from ARPA.
Yeah, that's correct.
But we also do have the potential for partnerships with BroadLink and some other pieces, too, that we have yet to fully explore, that may help to reduce some of that cost.
Yes.
And what about the public safety?
Public safety.
And wraparound services?
So, so these are scalable. But I'm hopeful that we can make a capital investment that will be very significant as we both get the coordinated homeless access underway, and frankly, as we transition from track. So something that will be impactful in the next, next winter. And what we're going to do is try to both identify that project and put together the package of funds to make it happen. So, you know, could we, would we like to see even more of those ARPA funds clawed back for this potential? Yes, we would. But basically, we'll try to utilize whatever you come up with and give you a proposal that will be, have that impact. I don't know. Matt, you've, you've sort of looked at what you think the, the options are as well. Do you want to say more about totals?
I mean, totals, as the mayor said, are completely scalable. I mean, I think if we go down the road of specific projects on all of these large pillars of initiatives that we're trying to accomplish, we could spend the money three, four, five times over. So I think it's, it's important for us to identify what it is that's being swept back before we say, okay, this is how we think to best reallocate it, instead of saying, I want to spend this money first, and then fall short, and then have to come back to the drawing board. I don't think it's efficient to do it in that way. So identifying what those funds are to, to identify scalable projects after the fact, I think is, is going to be the, the natural progression of the way this should go.
Right. Well, it is now 1:07. I will take two more questions.
Well, I was just going to speak to process again for ARPA, from the ARPA work group. And especially for those who haven't been here for the previous DOT exercises, the, what we have historically done is go through priorities of council members and administration, and then they've all been listed on a list, and saying, like, how would you like to prioritize that? And dollar amounts, though, is really helpful to say, how much can we allocate from that? So I was going to pull up the tranche five. This is leftovers from the town halls and outreach and all of that, and the previous councils' priorities. Oops, I locked myself out, so I don't have it. But it was like downtown amenities and bathrooms, broadband was on there, business legacy ownership. You guys got an email for all of it. So those, what we're going to look for at the next meeting is people identifying council members, saying, these are the projects I want to prioritize. And I think that should be shared around beforehand, along with administrations. And then everyone will prioritize where they think that funding should go. And before that, we'll have more of an update from all the work groups on those buckets of money.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, I just, and we can chat more about this offline, but if you could share kind of what your thoughts are for that significant one-time capital investment that you're thinking about, I would just like to have an idea, because I can't really picture what that would be, so.
Great, great. Well, again, thank you, Mayor, and your team, for a great conversation. I think the more we talk together, we'll just have better outcomes. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.